For radios.
Eight inches.
Oh, you're fine.
Hey, how are you? You need me to scoot over more? She's down.
No.
We already talked about that.
I'm good.
What is this? No.
Grinder pit.
Are back on the way.
Uh, vacuum system. The grinder pits. Actually, we'll probably end up getting a lot more of those. See, we're already waiting. Probably just. No wait. Get ground.
She's retired. She's forced to retire. Forced to retire.
We're supposed to get a lot more. We got to get something right.
It is 6:30 in the evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Mr. Hall, would you give us a prayer, please?
Let's pray. The living heavenly Father, we are blessed to walk in your presence day in and day out, knowing you're ever present and they were able to help us in all things. You know, the smallest of things and the largest of things in our lives. And Lord, we recognize that you need to be first in all those things. We thank you for the opportunity, though, to serve with the small things and the parts of our city and other things that we might have a part in. We just pray you give us wisdom guidance as we, as we make decisions and be a part of the leadership of our community. We pray in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you read the roll call, please?
Councilmember Hall.
Here.
Councilmember Chapman.
Here.
Councilmember McMinn.
Here.
Councilmember Hefner.
Here.
Councilmember Brooke.
Yes.
And Councilmember Rubel.
Here.
All our present. Council, I'd here to, first item on agenda is review approval of the City Council meeting minutes from September 16th. Have a chance to review them. I'd entertain a motion to approve as presented.
Motion.
We have a second?
Second.
Any input? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda is the Department of Reports. Have a chance to review. I'd entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
A motion. We have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any input? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Also, council, you've had a chance to review the financials that were provided. I'd entertain a motion to approve financials.
Motion.
We have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
Any input? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We did not have, or Patent Commission not have a meeting September and the Water Commission, Water Wastewater Advisor Committee not meet in September. Uh, I would like to meet with them on October if you would please, or next possible time. November, yes, please. Alright. Next on agenda is beginning of our old business, Orders 2025-17. Would you read the title, please?
An ordinance authorizing the Ward Fire Department to charge for fire responses and other emergency responses outside the city limits of Ward.
Counsel, this is on our third reading. Are there any questions, inputs? Are there any citizen input? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to put the Orders 2025-17 on its third reading?
Motion. Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hall.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember McMinn.
Yes.
Councilmember Hefner.
Yes.
Councilmember Brooke.
Yes.
Councilmember Rubel.
Yes.
Orders 2025, 2025 dash 17 has been approved on its third reading and I would entertain a motion to adopt Orders 2025-17.
Motion.
Second.
A motion, second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember McMinn.
Yes.
Councilmember Hefner.
Yes.
Councilmember Brooke.
Yes.
Councilmember Rubel.
Yes.
And Councilmember Hall.
Yes.
Orders 2025-17 has been approved and will go into effect, if I remember correctly, at the first of the year, yes. Thank you, council. Next on the agenda is Orders 2025-18. Would you read the title, please?
An ordinance repealing and replacing ordinance 2022-02, an ordinance establishing a procedure for the purchasing, sale, or exchange of property in the city of Ward and for other purposes.
Counsel, if you remember, this is on its second reading with modifications. We increase the spending authority of me by, to $25,000 on water and wastewater items only. With that, I'd entertain, any questions? Any citizen input? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to put Orders 2025-18 up for its second reading.
Like a motion.
A motion. We have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember McMinn.
Yes.
Councilmember Hefner.
No.
Councilmember Brooke.
No.
Councilmember Rubel.
No.
Councilmember Hall.
No.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Orders 2025-18 has failed on its second reading. I will not bring this back up, council. Orders 2025-19. Read title, please.
An ordinance repealing and replacing ordinance 2002-02, establishing a general penalty where no specific penalty is provided or where adopted by reference and for other purposes.
Counsel, we have been discussing this. This is up for its third reading. Any discussion?
I have, I'm, I'm sorry, I was at the, I was at the hospital, not, not in the last meeting.
Welcome back, by the way.
Thank you. I was reading through it today and, well, I guess yesterday. I'm, I'm concerned, I don't understand the balance, so we're talking about any city ordinance violation, or am I mistaken? Am I misreading that?
Any city, any city ordinance that does not have already a violation or a, or a fine built within.
Okay, so if I, if I don't cut my grass and it's not, if it's too, too tall, you're gonna, I'm gonna get a $1,000 fine, or is that already a precedent?
That's already in that.
We already got one for that.
Right, and that's up to a thousand. It doesn't have, and the judge has discretion on that.
Okay, so, so it said up to.
Yes, sir.
Seemed like to me, cause it, you know, it said a thousand the first time, two thousand the second time, three thousand, four thousand.
Shall not exceed.
Shall not exceed.
Yes, sir.
And I apologize, I didn't, it's not on the screen, so I wasn't sure of the reading. I forgot about that, but.
Uh, the, uh.
So.
The lead-in to that is.
So it's just up to the judge and he can do the max or whatever there, so.
Right.
Okay. I'm sure that he would be, or she would be, um, in.
I think it'd be egregious.
Yeah, yeah, to say that grass is a thousand dollars.
Well, again, the grass has penalties and fines already built into that ordinance, but an ordinance, we had a noise ordinance one time, or noise, and we didn't have a fine to go with it.
Right.
Can we just have Chris come up and re-sell his spiel?
Yeah.
My two cents again.
Yeah.
So, Councilmember Hall, this is in reaction to, there are some ordinances out there that don't have fines in them, that need them. We're working on updating those. It takes months to get them through context, to get those established. So if somebody comes in, we had a permit violation, fine, or permit violation, there was no, or stop work order, excuse me, and there was no, no fine for it. Well, we can't retroactively apply one, cause there's none there, so, and it took months to get it through context and we, we passed our window to prosecute that. So we, this is a fallback, and then as we come across an ordinance, if it doesn't have one in it, we can bring it to council and you guys can establish what it needs to be. Eventually, if we, if we get them all with one inside them, then this one will be a moot point, could be repealed.
Very good. Any further input? Any citizen input? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve ordinance 2025-19 on its third reading.
Motion.
Second.
A motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hefner.
Yes.
Councilmember Brooke.
Yes.
Councilmember Rubel.
Yes.
Councilmember Hall.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
And Councilmember McMinn.
Yes.
Orders 2025-19 has been approved on its third reading. I'd entertain a motion for, to adopt Orders 2025-19.
Motion to adopt.
A motion and a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brooke.
Yes.
Councilmember Rubel.
Yes.
Councilmember Hall.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember McMinn.
Yes.
And Councilmember Hefner.
Yes.
Orders 2025-19 has been approved and adopted and will be enforced in 30 days.
Is there a need for an emergency clause on there?
I did have the emergency clause, now did I not? Yes, I did. Yes, sir.
Motion.
I entertain a motion for an emergency clause. We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please. Thank you for catching that.
Councilmember Rubel.
Yes.
Councilmember Hall.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember McMinn.
Yes.
Councilmember Hefner.
Yes.
And Councilmember Brooke.
Yes.
Orders 2025-19, emergency clause, has been passed, um, which means the ordinance is effective immediately. Thank you, council. Next on the agenda is Orders 2025-20. I'm going to table that for right now. We've had some other issues come up, some questions about some land zoning, and we want to clarify that before we bring it back to you, so I'm going to table that to at least next month. Alright. Order 2025-21, please read the title.
An ordinance amending ordinance 2025 dash 05, establishing parking rules for the city of Ward, Arkansas concerning vehicles exceeding one ton and semi-trailer type vehicles, establishing penalties and for other purposes.
Counsel, we've had this discussion, we've had, we got dump trucks parking in residential areas and things like that, and this is needed to avert that. I entertain a, any comment?
I do have a question again.
Yes, sir.
So, I had, I don't right now, cause I've got rid of it, but I'll be purchasing another RV before too long. Um, I, I extended my driveway, so it'd be sufficient to pull in my driveway, but however, there's times when I've backed it out and set it on the, on the roadways so that we could pack up or do other things. And now, would I be in violation because it exceeds the, the weightage of the, of the, of this?
If you look, the ordinance calls for a commercial vehicle parking, your RV.
I, see, I keep missing these small things. I just see what speaks to me, so, thank you very much.
It, it only involves commercial vehicles. If you, if you have a, your RV, you're good, sir. Any further comment? Any cit- Pardon me?
I'm not using it for business.
Okay. I would ask you for your business permit. Okay. Uh, okay, any citizen comment? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to, oh, excuse me, I didn't, I spoke too soon. Come on up.
You did, you didn't give me enough time to stand up.
Introduce yourself, please.
Hey, I am Cheryl Ekman. I'm a resident of the Oakland Grove neighborhood on Ferguson Drive, which is the street that has the dump trucks. The other street, Saunders Drive, is the one that has the huge semi.
Right.
And tonight, actually, it's this big, huge dump truck as well. First of all, I want to say thank you all for changing this ordinance up. I know it started as just the parking ordinance, um, and we had addressed this issue with them back when all that began, just because it is such a big problem. It definitely does affect the integrity of the streets. I can speak on the dump trucks. The, um, the dump trucks are repaired, their maintenance is done on them, so where they both are sitting, there are substances in the street, um, there are stains in the street. The police became involved, I don't know, a few weeks ago, a month ago, to where they were dumping their tires across the street in the field between Dollar General and our residence. So this has become a big problem, not just with streets, but with things going on with them as well. Sorry, I made my little notes, I'd be brief. As far as neighbor issues, I live kinda catty corner to where the dump trucks are, so the neighbors right there by them, difficult for them to get in and out of their driveway. The dump trucks fire up between 5:30, 6:30 in the morning, and they're loud. I don't need an alarm clock, they wake me up, and then at 3 o'clock, they're coming back home. It impedes the flow of traffic, most definitely. The dump trucks are parked on the street, of course, but they're so big and they leave their driveway open, so they're sitting in front of their neighbors' yards as well. So it definitely is a neighbor problem. And definitely, if somebody right there wanted to sell their house, I wouldn't want to live across the street from these dump trucks. So definitely, that would become a problem as well. I know that kinda gets more out of the street issue, but it's been a neighbor issue as well. I guess I just have three questions. I'll just ask them, and if they can be answered, fine. If not, that's fine, too. I was wanting to know the date of the effectiveness, as long as the third reading's passed?
30 days from today.
30 days, okay, thank you. And will the substances on the street be addressed? From what I understand, with dump trucks, they line the dump truck bed with diesel fuel, so when they have a load, it slides off easier. So when they're, like, spray washing their beds out, all this is running out to the street. Um, so.
I'll have code enforcement take a look at it.
And then, this might be none of my business kind of thing, but how will the residents be notified of the changes with the ordinance?
I plan on having a letter done up and code enforcement put on the windshields of those dump trucks.
Okay.
For them to notice that in 30 days, you can no longer park there.
Again, we really appreciate it.
Those and others, too, not just.
Right, I mean, our neighborhood, I know, is an issue, and I actually went back and watched the last two city council meetings, and our neighborhood was brought up, but no residential neighborhood should have to put up with all this, so.
Correct, correct, and that's why.
Thank y'all for hearing me out, I appreciate it.
That's why we're doing this, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for talking.
Thank you.
I have one question.
Yes, ma'am, turn the mic on.
Is there any way they can get away with saying it's not commercial?
Not a dump truck.
Well, I'm just wanting to make sure.
You know, if we run into a situation like that, we'll, we'll engage our city attorney.
I can actually answer your question.
There you go.
The two dump trucks, it's a father-son operation that live there at the house. Both dump trucks, mhm. The, um, flatbed, flatbed semi-type vehicle, dump truck, whichever it is, he owns his own business as well, so, um.
Yes, post on the side of the.
So, yeah, I mean, they're always there.
They have commercial tags on them.
They're always there.
I just wanted to make sure.
Well, if we encounter that, we'll.
They have names on the sides of their doors.
If we would happen to encounter, um, that, we'll, we'll get involved. Any, any further comments, questions? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to approve Orders 2025-21. Their third reading.
Motion.
We have apparently a motion and a second, quickly. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hall.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember McMinn.
Yes.
Councilmember Hefner.
Yes.
Councilmember Brooke.
Yes.
And Councilmember Rubel.
Yes.
Orders 2025-21 has been approved on its third reason, reading. I'd entertain a motion to adopt Orders 2025-21.
Motion.
And a.
Second.
And a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember McMinn.
Yes.
Councilmember Hefner.
Yes.
Councilmember Brooke.
Yes.
Councilmember Rubel.
Yes.
And Councilmember Hall.
Yes.
Orders 2025 has been adopted, will be enforced in 30 days. Thank you, council. Next on the agenda is Orders 2025-23, new business. Read title, please.
An ordinance amending city of Ward ordinance 2025-16, establishing policy concerning providing utilities to subdivisions outside the city limits of Ward and for other purposes.
Counsel, this ordinance just clarifies in the, in this, in the previous ordinance that it, that it's amending what a, a subdivision title is by defined by the city of Ward Unified Development Ordinance implemented by a city ordinance 2025-20, once that's approved. I'd entertain, any comments, questions?
Do you want to say that one more time?
Well, this order, this, um, we pass an ordinance about how we deal with subdivisions outside city limits and utilities. We weren't real clear on what a subdivision is, so we're joining that with subdivision ti, uh, definition in the UDO, which will be passed, so.
This is the one that we were saying, like, the mile out, is that?
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Right, right, right. Uh, even further than that, if it's a subdivision, they want to, we just, this is further defines it, make sure there's no, um, questions. Any, uh, further questions, comment, any citizen comment? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to approve Orders 2025-23 on its first reading.
Motion.
A motion, we have a second? Roll call, please.
Councilmember McMinn.
Yes.
Councilmember Hefner.
Yes.
Councilmember Brooke.
Yes.
Councilmember Rubel.
Yes.
Councilmember Hall.
Yes.
And Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Orders 2025-23 has been approved on its first reading. I will carry it forward to next month on second reading. Next on the agenda is Orders 2025-24. Please read the title.
An ordinance establishing policy concerning providing city utilities to develop properties outside the city limits of Ward, declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
Counsel, this brought about, uh, in reviewing this other one for the subdivision, dawned on us that if you don't want to put a subdivision outside city limits, it falls under the other ordinance, but if you just want to put a house outside the city limits, and you want our utilities or a commercial property, a developed property, not a subdivision. So we include this, so they go through the same motion as a subdivision. If you want to be, have our utilities, annexing if you're connected to the city limits. If you're not annexed, connected to the limits, and you want our utilities, then you have to enter, um, an agreement that once you connect, you'll be on the city limits, or on, uh, in, annexing. Or we, uh, will not provide sewer. In this particular process, then get water, but not sewer, unless they go through the motions. Make the mic on.
Is there, not in question the need for ordinance. One question is the need for two ordinance, just addressing the same situation.
Okay.
Is there, is there a way that this, these ordinance can be combined into one?
Yes, you can do that. You could have a section one.
I could have amended 2025-16 and include developed properties, just did not, just in.
Say again that, Mayor?
I said I could have amended 2025-16 to include developed properties, I did not, I just included a new ordinance.
Yeah, it could, you could do a section one for subdivisions and one for individual houses, section one, section two, you can do that. Just, just thinking because of the, the human nature, you know, like we've seen from Captain Hall down there, you know, people miss stuff, so if we combine it, then, I don't know, it's like you got, got one-stop shop for the ordinance for that.
And we can do that, it's not an issue, just.
So there's any way.
For writing it was just what I chose to do.
So, I mean, we could approve it, but it just combined to the other one. How's that work?
No, I'd have to, you'd have to, to write an ordinance amending 25-16 with this language in order to make it, you can't say, approve this ordinance and meld it in to 25-16.
Okay, so we have to, we have to.
What we can do, if it's, if that's the wishes of the council, we can table this until next month, but I did have a, a emergency clause on this one.
What about on 25-23 that you just passed, which amended 25-16?
Yeah.
We could add the language, you could.
We could, you, we could, you could rescind the, uh, first and second motion. Did you, did you do, you didn't do emergency on that one, right?
No.
Could rescind your first and second motion, discuss that, modify 25-23 to include a second section with the language of 25-24.
Okay.
And re-vote on it.
Okay.
And still add the emergency clause.
Right, we should add, yeah, then we put them both in emergency clause now. Okay, so.
So whoever made the motion.
Who made a motion?
To approve Orders 25-23 on its first reading.
Prescind your motion.
Motion on the last one, rescind. And second, the second.
And Hall.
Yeah, I rescinded, too, yeah.
Okay, so that never happened.
So now start over.
So then, then we can add an amendment, is that basically what he's gonna do?
What you want to do is.
So somebody's got a motion to amend 25-23 to include this language that was in.
Motion where he said.
Yes.
Motion to amend 25-23 with the language of 25-24?
Yes.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second.
As amended first reading.
As amended, well.
And then so forth and so.
Right, right. As amended to include the language of 25-24 into Orders 25-23. Alright, we have motion second on that. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hefner.
Yes.
Councilmember Brooke.
Yes.
Councilmember Rubel.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Hall.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
And Councilmember McMenon.
Yes.
Ordinance 25, 20, 2025-23 is approved on its first reading as amended. I would entertain a motion to suspend the rules for a second and third reading on ordinance 25, 2025-23.
Motion.
No motion.
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I entertain a motion to approve ordinance 2025-23 as amended.
Motion.
No motion. And a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brooke.
Yes.
Councilmember Rubel.
Yes.
Councilmember Hall.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember McMenon.
Yes.
And Councilmember Hefner.
Yes.
Okay. Orders 2025 as amended has been approved on its, has been adopted. I entertain a motion to invoke the emergency clause on ordinance 2025-23 as amended.
Motion.
No motion. Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Rubel.
Yes.
Councilmember Hall.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember McMenon.
Yes.
Councilmember Hefner.
Yes.
And Councilmember Brooke.
Yes.
Orders 2025-23 as amended will go to, in fact, immediately as soon as I rewrite it. Okay, thank you, council. All right. Next on the agenda is resolution 2025-41. Read the title, please.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and/or city clerk of the city of Ward to enter into a contract to purchase one 2026 Dodge Durango vehicle from Red River Dodge in Hebrew Springs, Arkansas for the fire department.
Council, this was approved by motion last month. This is just a formality put in a resolution form. I entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Resolution 2025-41.
Second.
Yeah, we motion second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda is resolution 2025-42. Read title, please.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and/or city clerk of the city of Ward to enter into a contract with Wilkes Communication to purchase five handheld AWIN radios.
Council, these radios will be replacing those that are old and outdated, and they are being bought with Act 833 funds that are provided by the state.
Motion.
Second.
Motion second. Any comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda is resolution 2024, 25-43. Read the title, please.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with bond engineering to prepare an updated master water plan.
Council, we need to get an updated master water plan for our city as it entails through Lonoc White, as they're working through their master water plan, to make sure we're all in the same. And this will provide us with ten, fifteen, twenty-five years projections on the needs for water.
Motion.
I entertain a motion to approve resolution 2025.
Second.
Motion second. Any comments? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda is resolution 2025-44. Please read the title.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with bond, bond engineering to design and manage a project to overlay and improve several streets in the city hall parking lot.
Council, last month, a motion was made for, to go forward with this. Since that time, Bond Engineering has reviewed the areas and they determined Langford Street does not need to be overlaid at this time. So I moved that out and moved that Spencer Street in, which is the short street between Highway 319 and Campbell Street, that would complete that area over there. And then the area down Marshall, included that also.
I just have a typo question.
Yes, sir.
Does this need to say the mayor and/or city clerk, or no?
Ah, yeah, it does. I will make that change. Any comments? I entertain a motion to approve resolution 2025-44.
Motion.
We have a motion with a second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Excuse me, before we go there, we have a comment. Yes, ma'am?
Yes.
Thank you for.
Well, this is not what I'm here for, but.
I understand.
What about Moon Road?
Moon Road is in discussions with the county judge on a possible tap project to widen Moon Road from Brewers, well, from, what's that, Wilson Loop?
Wilson.
Out to 319.
Yes.
Or 38.
Okay.
So that is.
When, near future, years away?
It will, it will be a, a process. Because when you get into tapping, you'll see tonight, we have a sidewalk project that was approved in '22. We're just now getting it going. Sidewalk.
Okay.
So they, they take.
Some of that, it's because that entire road's not in the city. Some of it's in the county and everything.
Yeah, and I know half of it is and half of it isn't.
Yeah, the county and I, the judge and I have already talked about it. We, we have a, an agreement to start working toward this issue because of all the traffic that's going to be on Moon Road.
Yeah, because I know that.
It is being addressed.
It's fixing to be 700 houses right there. Close. Thank you.
Yes, okay. We have motion second on the floor, I believe, for resolution 2025-44. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda is resolution 2025-45. Read title, please.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and/or city clerk to dispose of the following vehicles.
These are all wastewater vehicles that are outlived, they're useless, and aren't even running, if I understand right. Bruce can clarify that. But we just need permission to get rid of them. We're going to get rid of them on a sealed bid process. They're not going to put these on gov deals.
Motion.
Motion with a second?
Second.
Any comments? Yes.
Say sealed bid for all three, or we're going to do them individually?
Individually. So, well, figure that out tomorrow after you guys approve it tonight. We'll, you know, we'll, we'll advertise it, give about, you know, two weeks or so time period and have a, a public notice of when the sealed bids will be open in a public.
I have a question. What makes this different than the gov deals? Just because I really don't know, so.
Well, normally, a lot of times we'll put things out of gov deals, and then when they don't sell, we come back and do this, after the fact, sixty days later. We like to just go forward with the sealed bid, just see if we get rid of them that way. Gov deals is a process that sometimes is, and, and for what these will probably bring, it's probably not worth the hassle. Be truthful.
These are all non-running pretty well.
Correct. The O-74 does run, but it has low compression, so the motor's.
Good scratch.
We have a motion with a second?
Second.
Any further comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Resolution 2025-46 is next. We have to read the title, please. Chief?
A resolution authorizing the retirement of police canine Harmon and transfer of ownership to handler Sean Barber.
My only question on this is, is there going to be a monetary thing? Like we sell that dog to him for a dollar? We did not pay for the dog. Well, I thought Jacksonville got into that thing with one of their previous canines, where they gave her the dog and then it caused havoc and it come back on the city, so.
Sidebar.
Do what?
You're having sidebar.
Yes, I was.
Okay. Anyway, do you, in your, your opinion, do we need to put a monetary value of a dollar on this or not?
I'll be honest, I don't know. I, I would, my first guess was no. The gentleman back here said he heard where City Jacksonville got into. Yeah, that's what I said.
We can add.
Allow me to look into that tomorrow.
We can add and just add.
Sell it to him for a dollar. It's like a hurting thing, right, yeah. That's fine. It's definitely not going to hurt anything.
I, you know, I can, I can.
I'll pay for it.
Obviously, I can.
I can afford that.
Obviously, I can. And the gentleman likes to speak also.
No, I'm just saying.
Please identify yourself.
Jeff Gibson. I live here on Moon Ridge, Rubel.
Okay.
My experience with City Jacksonville, that's who I work for, straight department.
Oh, yeah.
Mr. Rubel, he is correct. You least do have to, least purchase a dollar. That way, if anybody comes back and says, hey, you didn't do this, or you didn't do that, you got records that you sold it for a dollar.
Because at the end of the day, it's still a city asset.
It's still a city, yes, sir.
All right. I would, I entertain a motion to amend resolution 2025-46 to add a dollar that buys it for a dollar.
Is the dog just old or?
Getting cancer eggs.
Oh, I can relate to that.
Motion.
We have a motion for the amendment, right? To amend, okay. Second? All those in favor, amending the resolution 2025-46 to include buying it for a dollar. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Now, I need a motion to approve resolution.
Motion to approve.
As amended.
Second.
And we have a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Resolution 2025-46 is approved. Thank you. All right. Resolution 2025-47. Council, I threw this on to you tonight. We had a bid opening yesterday, and the bids were certified today by the engineering firm. So I apologize for the last minute putting this on. But read, read title for resolution 2025-47.
A resolution accepting Wooster Construction Company as the low bidder for Phase Four of the Ward Safer Out to Schools sidewalk project and authorizing the mayor and/or city clerk to sign appropriate documents for the project.
Council, we have $276 from the tap project on this project and $341,000. We're out at about $55,000, which is less than what we had anticipated. So. Same what? No, sir. No. We had, we had seven, we had eight bidders. Seven we opened, one didn't follow the right procedures, so he wasn't open. But no, this is a new, a new company. They're checked out by the engineering firm and they're fine. They're out of Greenbrier.
And this is from Moon, Moon Road to down to Wilson Loop?
This is, no, this is a chandelier and within Orchard Hollow, and then down from Moon Road to, what's the name of that street down there? What's that little subdivision there? Pardon me?
Sweetwater?
No. Anyway, straight up, down, down, down Wilson Loop from Moon Road.
Gold medals.
Thank you, gold medals. Yeah, thank you. Drawn a blank. Anyway.
I make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Second? Yes, sir. Mic on, please. Put your mic on.
So we've been awarded already $276,000 with us. So we're going to be out $2,000?
They'll come back and modify that. It's eighty percent. RDOT will come back since it's a lower bid. They'll come back and modify what we get from them. Basically, we'll end up paying twenty percent.
Okay, all right.
Okay, we have a motion second. Any further comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Council, I didn't put it on the screen. I apologize. I can have her read it. Resolution 2025-48. Go ahead and read title, please. I apologize for not putting it on screen and not giving you all, did I give you all a copy of that? Oh, good. But I didn't put it on screen. Go ahead and read title, please.
Resolution authorizing the mayor and/or city clerk of the city of Ward to purchase water meters and meter transceiver units.
This is to refill our stock, our stock on meters. We have lots of meters going out. There are new, new, new areas. So I entertain, this is from where we get them from. I entertain a motion to approve.
So this is for like the new subdivisions and stuff? We're not replacing?
Or even just anybody who is on our water system, even out of county, who puts a new house in or whatever, we had to put a meter in.
Well, I was just mainly looking at, we're not having problem, $28,600 worth of problems out of the ones we got.
Oh, no, sir.
It's most, pretty much all new stuff.
Okay.
No. All that's in the ground right now is all a warranty.
Okay, good. Motion.
We've got seventy plus that could go in any day now. It's been just about doubling every month for the last couple of months, so.
What Bruce was saying, not on the microphone. He's loud over here, that's true. Anyway, we got a motion with a second? We need a second.
Second.
All right. Any further comments? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Please show Mr. Brooke opposing. Motion carries. All right. Annually, we have to approve our millage rate, currently five mills dedicated to, hundred percent to the general fund. Yes, sir?
Can we back up one?
Okay.
Because I think Councilmember Brooke had a comment before we did the ayes and ahs.
Mr. Brooke?
No comment.
What I was wondering was, Bruce was saying that they're putting seventy out a month. And so he's only asking for forty. So why are you only asking for forty if you're putting seventy out?
Well, because on the, because we do have some. The reason why this one is this amount is because last month we saw a huge uptick and it diminished our supplies. So this should, with what we have, this should, should get us by for six to eight weeks.
We need to up this quality.
I mean, that's just, that's just guesstimating.
Right.
We need to up this.
Well, wait, this, we can come back.
I mean, we could, we could go up on the meters, but there's plenty enough endpoints on there.
I don't want to revisit this in two months, though.
We'd want to be repaid, though, right? Like, these are new.
Oh, they're, yeah.
Yeah, they're, they're all, they're all for pretty much new construction.
So just because I don't know, what's the, what's the point that you're talking about? What is that? What part is that? That you say we don't need any more of those other than what you've got listed?
The, the endpoints, so there's meters on there, and then there's two types of endpoints, single points and the, and the dual points. And I think we had fifty-four of each of those.
So a single point is like one house and then?
Correct.
Dual points, you've got two houses in the box.
Yes.
Okay. And you have plenty of those. How many would we need to substantiate?
Four months.
Yeah, four months for the rest of the year.
It's, it's hard to say, you know, we haven't, it hasn't been that bad, but, you know, probably less than twenty in August. And then we saw double that in September. And there's probably seventy or so coming up. That could be any day.
So does our, can our, does our building inspector have a number on projected houses going in for this?
They're, they're going up like crazy.
Can we not just double this amount?
You know, part of it's the weather, too. You know, if we get into the rainy season, that, that's probably going to slow down.
So if we doubled the forty, is that, I mean, what? Is that going to keep this from coming back in four months, and Bruce saying we need forty more?
Yeah. Normally, we would, we would try to stay, stay up on it. We just got hit with a lot more than normal last month, and it's been increasing.
Are we run into a warranty situation also, where they sit on the shelf too long and not be in warranty?
That thing is once they put in the ground.
No, I mean, not, with that amount, you know, even if we double that, they're not going to sell the shelf right now, so.
And that's, that's a concern when we do pumps.
These are the ones that are put in use. I don't think the ones that are bought, the things weren't put in use.
Council, if you want to double the number of meters, we'll have to re-figure the amount, obviously.
I'd make a motion to double the line one part of this purchase order.
Not just line one, you got to also do line two and three, too?
He said line, that we didn't, we don't need those. We got plenty of those. This is just replenishing stock.
Another, what I'm saying is, if you're putting in, if you're putting in a new meter and they don't have these other things with it, you're not going to get the readings.
Oh, we have to put them in at the same time.
Yeah, I think there's like fifty, there was like a hundred and so endpoints.
So, yeah.
He's got fifty-four singles and fifty-four, I guess, double.
How many endpoints do you have right now?
I couldn't give you an exact number.
Can't we table this?
No, we need to get these on order.
Yeah, because, I mean, because the other thing is, is if, you know, how long is it going to take? Sometimes we get them quick. Sometimes it, it takes a bit if there's a lot of other people that are, you know, basically doing the same as us.
To answer Mr. Rubel's question, our office processed twenty-five building permits last week alone. I know Moonlight Meadows, we had a pre-construction meeting with them this afternoon, and they're digging their first footings in the morning. So there'll be four and footings within the next day or two. So that's not a definite number, but we could see twenty-five houses start this week that we processed building permits for last week.
Bruce, give us a number that'll get you through the next several months.
Well, if you, if you, if you double the amount of meters, and that should cover us for guesstimation, eight weeks. But we can also put in, you know, like a, a month from now, six weeks from now, we can put in a small order if, if that's, you know, falling behind. Because norm, normally, we would stay up on this, and we wouldn't even bring it to you. It's just that, it's just so many happened last month that we need to make a big order. So if you double the meters, that guesstimation, that should potentially cover us next eight, nine weeks.
So are you saying just the meters or?
Just the meters, yeah.
All three lines?
Just the meters.
Okay.
Motion.
All right. We have a motion second to amend ordinance, or resolution 2025-48 to double the meters. I have no idea what that price is going to be, so you have to give me authority on an open-ended price.
It adds another $6,320 to it.
Something like that. So, so I need a motion and a second to approve the amending?
Motion.
Motion, we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
I need a motion and a second to approve Resolution two hundred, two thousand twenty-five forty-eight as amended.
Motion.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, I think we're back to the millage rate now. Alright, I need a motion to approve our annual millage rate, keep it as, as it is and has been forever.
Motion.
Motion, a second? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Alright, uh, the Department of Justice, uh, bulletproof breast program, in actuality, we're not eligible. We've got a grant in two thousand twenty-three. It's over five years, so scrap that.
Done.
Next on the agenda is Tanya, Tanya Gibson, and the gen- the microphone is yours. She contacted me and asked to be put on the agenda and I obliged that, so if you please, uh, identify yourself.
Uh, may I address the board with?
Sure.
Pictures? Thank you. Okay, um, my name is Tanya Gibson.
Can, um, Bruce, you have one? It's lift station.
And I live at one Moon Ridge Drive in Ward. Um, I've lived at this residence for the last seven years. Um, and basically, it's my house, a privacy fence, and this sewage pump. So, um, when I came home on October the thirteenth, which was on a Monday, I came home to find the city workers working on the pump station. Um, there were three workers on site and they were just dressed in their regular work clothes and work boots. Um, but, um, closer to inspection, um, I could see that the sewage was running out of the manhole and that was located inside that fenced area. Um, so when I asked one of the workers what they were doing, he says, well, we're trying to duct-take the pump again. In which I know this because I've been there seven years and I always go out there to ask them what they're doing and all of that. Um, so the workers were literally standing in the sewage because it was running down, out, over the sidewalk into the ditch. Um, and as you can tell in the pictures, um, I just wanted you to know what's going on. And so when I asked one of the workers, um, you know, was this the proper thing to do? Is this my code or whatever? He says, well, he said, no, but we're going to put lime down. So, okay, I'm guessing the lime was supposed to suffice, take care of the environment and protection and all of that. Um, you know, I've got, I've got all the codes. Um, you know, the method of disposal, how it should be taken, taken care of. The operation and maintenance of individual sewage disposal and treatment systems. Discharges from the sewage disposal, how they are supposed to be done in the correct manner. Um, you know, I, I mean, I've got them all. Mr. Jones knows them, but I guess my thing is I want to know why a pump wasn't used to take the excess out and use for, you know, proper disposal. Why was it just overrun into the sidewalk in which when they left, they didn't put up any barriers for, you know, the kids not to walk down the sidewalk? Here's the sewage in the ditches that whatever random dogs are going to drink out of. You know, and I just, I just I just wanted y'all to be aware of what's going on if you don't live in that area. And I feel that I've lived there a long time. Like I said, and this is the first time I finally had enough to address it, that it should be done the proper way. I'm not saying you got to go buy a twenty thousand twenty-five new pump truck. But you could have hired one for this purpose, just rented it, whatever. Or paid a third party to come and do it. So, thank you for listening.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention and, and coming forward to the council. Uh, Bruce, would you like to address?
Yeah, so that's, you know, since I've been a part of the city, that, you know, that's been a problematic lift station, um, for lots of reasons. Um, that's also why, you know, with Moonlight Meadows, uh, we have the, that's going to be converted to a manhole there. So the, we'll no longer be at lift station and, uh, he gave me an ETA on that, uh, yesterday of approximately, he's thinking two weeks to have that completely offline. Um, I can say recently, that was the one that recently got hit by lightning and burnt and melted down. Um, and so we've had a lot of issues there. Which we are required to put down lime and report it to ADQ, um, which we did. And we actually got reported to them twice of everything that happened there and, and whatnot, um, per their requirements. And it's just, it's just been problematic. You know, it doesn't have enough buffering capacity, it, you know, it's the, the, um, the holding tank, if you will, is, is too, too small, which is one of the reasons why we wanted to, uh, take it offline. Um, so there's no, there's no room for error if something does happen. So, yeah, so she's right, you have lots of issues.
So this will be, uh, decommissioned in two weeks, you said?
Yeah, that's the, that's the ETA gave me was, was two weeks.
And how will it be cleaned up?
Well, cur- currently, what we're required to do is pick up, um, any trash or debris and disinfect with lime.
Is there any way to get rid of? Is there any way to get rid of all of it or cover it with dirt, take the fence down?
No, the only thing you could do is you, you'd have to scrape all the dirt, grass, everything, if you wanted to go that route. Which is not feasible, which is why they, they typically have you pick up any trash or debris and disinfect the area.
So it can't be filled in or anything?
Do what?
It cannot be filled in or, I have my mic on. Cannot be filled in or anything?
The lift station?
No, so, so that current, that, that current, um, lift station, um, will be converted to a manhole.
It's not going to have any pumps in it.
Okay.
So there's not going to be any pumps. It's just, it'll basically just be a manhole.
So can it, all stuff that's not going to be used anymore that, like the fence, because you're not going to have a fence around a manhole, are you?
No, there's no need to.
All that stuff be removed and it cleaned up, though? Cause I've driven by there and it is yuck.
And the, uh, the generator removed to the new pump station on Moon Road. And if you're a member of council, we partnered with the developer to upsize, if you will, that, that lift station up there. Sole purpose was to, for, for growth and to get rid of that lift station on Moon Road.
All to be left to the concrete top.
That's the little dome thingy?
Yeah.
So when it's all said and done, that problem won't happen again.
I think, I think what the, one of the issues she was having was that communication and the unawareness of the population that is there. When you're up and off or sectioning it off so that way nobody walks through the sewage that's on the ground and stuff like that. So maybe in the future.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that one bit.
That's probably what she has more.
Training.
We also have some, uh, young, uh, workers who are a little flippant sometimes on their answers and we need to do some more training on that. Uh, such as?
I have a question. If you put lime down on it, it disinfects it, it renders the sewage neutral, right? But in, on page six, it shows a fire hydrant back there. Could we not have washed it down after the application of lime?
I don't believe you can wash it down.
I mean, it's ultimately going to wind up in a storm drain anyway. You scattered it all over the ground, so.
Yeah, I mean, if, if, if it, if it's like, you know, if, if it's like, so I've seen situations where if it, if it gets like thick enough to where like you can't see grass, nothing, then, then that the only way to remedy that would be to scrape everything up, grass and everything with the front-end loader, which can be done, has been done.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm just going off of what we see in the pictures and then I don't really see any debris like you would think from coming from sewer. I mean, I don't see any, like toilet tissue or
It's, it's mostly.
Large solids or anything.
Yeah, it's mostly gray water. Uh, solids in a wastewater system represent less than a tenth of a percent.
So, well, all, what I'm, was getting at is if it lime neutralizes it, just for aesthetics and the fact I wouldn't want to walk down that sidewalk. I mean, future speaking, can we, like, wash that stuff down? I mean, if I lived over, I'd be mad to. I mean, I understand, so.
Did the lime wasn't put down until after all that water was dried up? Or sewage, I should say, was dried up?
Yeah, typ- typically how that works is once you, you report it, right, and it is stopped, that is when they typically, you would put down the disinfectant. Not unless it's extended and it, you know, you got something that's overflowing for, you know, twenty-four hours non-stop, then then you have to take more drastic actions. But typically, once the overflow stops is when you would put down the disinfectant.
Um, Bruce, like what, okay, so when you put the lime down, is that harmful to anybody, anything, dogs? Kids, whatever?
I, I guess it could be like anything else if a dog decides to eat the lime.
No, I don't think it is in particular, otherwise ADQ wouldn't have us doing that.
Well, I'm not disagreeing with that, but I mean, I think the whole point is too, like, there's, there hasn't been, and this has been an ongoing thing because that's not the first time and it's happened at my home, too. That, um, there's no notification and it goes back to the whole thing about communication again. There's no notification to the families to let them know, like, this is what we had to do and it's safe or it's not safe or avoid it for so long. And that's, I think that we keep coming back to that same thing when it comes to the water department, that it's not great on communication about that kind of stuff, water and sewer. Cause you don't know what you're coming home to. I mean, areas get torn up and they're left that way or they're not evenly fixed and then it never comes back around.
She was talking about a pump truck. Do you have something like that or? What could have?
Well, we, we, so there is a stand, there, we did get it, we did put a standby pump there, um, which, um, comes from Austin, which we kind of share it. And it was not in use by them, so, um, we made the call and we went and picked it up and brought the standby pump in.
Yeah, we had a catastrophic failure and then we didn't have a pump. We have rented from Rain for Rent. Uh, Morrison Lift Station, we rented for probably six months.
But it, but initially, we tried to, we tried to make the necessary repairs to get it operational.
I may be totally misunderstanding. I think she was talking about a pump truck to suck up the excess, like in the tank to keep it from overflowing.
Instead of the overflow going?
Instead of it running down the sidewalk. I think is pretty well what she was getting at. And that's why I was asking, could we have not have flushed that to where at least it didn't?
Diluted.
Yeah, dilute it to where at least if your dog walks away.
Yeah, typically, the ADQ wouldn't want you to do that. You, you, you're, your, your option is, is to
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, you want to minimize the spread, you want to minimize the spreading.
Right.
You know, but it, in that case, if, you know, if it's bad enough, the where you think it, you know, need to be washed like that, you just have to scrape everything up, dirt and everything.
Okay, that, that's where, what I was going to.
I will tell you this, we're going to take this instance as a training. You know, and we're going to, we're going to, uh, break this down and see what was right, what was wrong. Uh, and then after action, you know, type of situation, uh, and, and see what we could do better to include communications. I mean, uh, that is, that is an issue, always has been an issue, continues to be an issue, but it's something that we should be able to fix.
Well, and being in close, close proximity, you know, to the, to, you know, because that, that lift station is just right there. It's like right there in the subdivision, right by the homes and, uh, sure, that could have been barricaded.
I've asked for privacy fence.
I have one last question. Do they make locking manhole covers?
Yes.
Okay.
They're heavy.
Those things are wasteland.
Oh, they're not like the old ones?
No, they're like hundred pounds.
With the Ninja Turtles top of them?
They are, yeah, they are like a hundred and twenty pounds, I believe, for a cam locking lid.
In any case, uh, Ninja Turtle's notwithstanding, um.
I just want to make sure kids are safe.
They're safe.
But indeed, it has been a problem and has been a problem for years, um, which is why we went into, um, you know, the partnership to, uh, take that offline, so.
Well, I would like to suggest when it is decommissioned and get everything, get the fence out of there, make it pretty.
Well, there's no reason to have the fence because
Look at that ugly thing for how many years?
The generator's not going to be there. It's going to go to the.
I know, that generator is loud.
You know, with all that gray water, it might grow good flowers.
But I'm not complaining about the noise. I'm just complaining about.
Does it smell?
Oh.
Okay.
Lift stations do.
And then you even had people posting on Cabot Strong about the odor in their house just from what was going on right next door, that they had no clue. I didn't, I didn't, I didn't post anything. No, I don't do that. I came straight here, wanted you to know what's going on and how it needs to be properly handled.
Well, he's estimating two weeks. Could you come back next month?
I'm sorry.
He's estimating two weeks. If it does happen, can you come back next month and tell us how it's going? Thank you.
Sure. I don't want to, I'm not here to get anybody in trouble. It's just, I want it done properly.
I, I have seen that place and it is ugly and so I don't know.
Lift stations are not meant to be pretty. Anyway, we'll take it and thank you very much for coming forward. I, I, we do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Alright. Mayor's report for this month, uh, we've talked about SARS four, obviously. SARS five, we're waiting on a cultural resource survey before we can move forward with that. Uh, we were disapproved on our SARS six railroad crossing engineering. Uh, we are discussing with the engineers and R-DOT is, why did we get this approved and what can we do to get approved in the future possibly? Uh, easement letters are still having some issues on the water wastewater. There was some question about, uh, the wording of it. We've gone back to the, uh, engineering, got new easement letters. We, we put them out. I'm going to, uh, actually schedule a public meeting with everybody involved in the, in the, um, vacuum system on that particular, uh, project. Bring them in so we can explain everything, get easement signed and, and all that kind of good stuff. Water tank rehab, I believe we're working the highway three twenty-one tank now. It should be done in a couple of weeks. Project's been going very well. Uh, Street Eight Committee, we're waiting for them to, uh, meet, of course, and we're still waiting for the LED replacement project, the ADA upgrade to the city hall. And HVAC, we, uh, I've had a meeting with, um, uh, the, the state on this, still waiting for Metro Plan for their funding possibly come through, but uh, that, that process is going on. The live feed cameras for the parks has been delayed to first quarter two thousand twenty-six. They have offered and we've accepted to put static solar cameras in, in there as a temporary measure. And of course, it will not affect the warranty of the, uh, PTC cameras until they are installed. And that is my report for today. And do we have anybody who wants to speak on non-agenda items? You signed up, you still want to speak?
Oh, I'll just.
Oh, you're good? Okay, just want to make sure.
Yep, I'm good, thank you.
Alright. Uh, having no further action, council, do you have anything we need to bring up? Hearing nothing? Hearing nothing, announcements? Movies in the park this Saturday, maybe. Probably not. Planning commissions next, uh, Monday at six thirty. Budget workshop, council, put it on your agenda, November tenth at six PM in the, uh, dining hall. Next city council meeting is November eighteenth. Corner store and church will be doing their annual Thanksgiving feed on November twenty-second, uh, thanks Casey and his church members. Eleven to one, thank you, sir. And, uh, November twenty-seven, twenty-eighth, we are closed for Thanksgiving. And now, if you'd like to.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Okay, but a motion, a second. Everybody in favor? We adjourn. Thank you, everybody, for showing up. I appreciate it.